Okay, it's 7:30, so we're gonna call the committee of the whole meeting to order. It is Tuesday, July 18th. First item on the agenda is roll call.
Rosado?
Here.
Etac?
Here.
Stark?
Here.
Chantet?
Wolf?
Here.
Saldati?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Meitzler?
Here.
Mueller?
Here.
Uwer?
Here.
Serone? And McFadden?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Next item is item two, which is approval of the minutes for the June 27th, 2017. Anybody have any comments or questions? Get a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mueller, second by Uwer. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Item three is items to be removed, added or changed. We are gonna have to add executive session, so we'll make that item seven A.
Eight.
And that will be for the purpose of potential litigation, but there won't be anything to come out of it after the executive session. Okay, so we'll go on then to item four, which is matters from the public for items that are not on the agenda. Mr. Chatterster, I believe you've got something you wanted to... If you could, please come up and use the podium and give us your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Jim Chatterster, and I own the property at 318 Church Street. A year ago, I came to the city council to get approved for the garage to be built in front of the house. The city engineer stated the lot was too low, and it would not be approved unless we agreed to put and pay for storm sewer all the way around the lot. And I agreed to that at my cost. In February, I met with Laura Newman, the city administrator, to inform her a plan to work outside driveway and storm sewer could be done at the same time while necessary equipment is on site. The administrator directed me to rab... I can't pronounce his name, but the engineer department. And his worker and him came out and shot grades from the curb and the sidewalk. And it was 2 percent, which they said was adequate. I felt there could be a problem with the drainage from the street to the curb, so I shot grades from the crown of the street to the curb, and there was eight inches of pitch. The difference between these two grades will be a problem. When it rains, the water will push the driveway and sidewalk up on... With nowhere to drain. I informed the engineer department of this issue and was told they are only concerned with the grade from the approach to the street. And I was sent a letter denying any help with this problem. The city inspector, Jeff Albertson, told me that if I didn't have any engineered... Or if the engineer department didn't do anything, any help should call Gary Holm. He had it, the head of the street department. I called Mr. Holm and asked for a meeting to discuss this issue, and he refused me. Mr. Holm stated, "I received a denial letter," and therefore, he would not meet with me. I am here asking the city council for help to resolve this matter. I believe it is the city's responsible to raise the sidewalk and fix the curb on this property. This is the only property that sits low. I will, as agreed, to put necessary storm sewer. And I'm just wondering, you know, Gary Holm, you know, he heard the engineer's side of it, and he would not even meet with me to hear my, you know, assess. And, you know, I don't think they shot the crown of the road, and it just, you know, and I got, you know, there's pictures there showing that, you know, it floods and stuff. There's a problem with that lot, you know, because I'm spending, you know, a good $10,000 to put storm sewer all the way around the property. And, you know, and it was an eyesore to begin with. We tore the house down and built a new house. And, you know, we're spending all this money and stuff, and all we're asking, you know, I asked the city engineer, I says, you know, "If the city pays for the material, we'll do the work." And, you know, and they refused any help. You know, and, you know, and there's a water problem. I mean, you can see the pictures, you know, I took pictures and stuff, and the curb's all broken and stuff. And, you know, and there's a picture on the first page or the second page where the B-612 curb is supposed to be, you know, a concrete curb, and the city goes around and, you know, they blacktop over this curb and stuff, and that's the wrong way. And he, you know, and I told him, I says, "That's not the proper way." I says, "I did curb, you know, for my, you know, I did concrete curb, you know, for 35 years." And I says, you know, "There's a picture, you know, that's the way it's supposed to look, you know, not with blacktop." You know, the curb's only like two inches, and it's supposed to be a six-inch curb. And, you know, like, there's four inches of blacktop, and the approach to my driveway is down below the asphalt, you know, four inches. And, you know, I would, you know, like some, you know, some help with that, you know.
So I guess I talked to Mr. Chatterster outside the door for a couple of minutes before we came in, so I think one thing you missed, Jim, was what happens here is, as we've seen happen in other parts of town, you get pooling of water in the approaches because the asphalt is now higher than the approach. We made that decision quite a few years ago on how we were gonna resurface the streets and to what extent we were gonna rebuild or resurface. So there's a lot of areas in towns that... In town that does have the same issues even after we just get done repaving the streets because we just don't have the funds to replace approaches and replace sidewalks all the way up to the... Right away. Gary, correct me if I'm wrong in that. I mean, that was a decision that the council made probably four years ago, right?
Yes, but this particular roadway was resurfaced in 1999.
Right.
Eighteen years ago.
I'm just kinda trying to lay a little, you know, history here on what we got going on all around town.
When you say "approach," that's the apron?
The apron. Apron, approach, same thing, yeah. So I think what Mr. Chatterster's trying to get at here is he's invested a very large amount of money to handle the stormwater issues around this piece of property, and he's trying to address this issue also. And whether it's... I don't know, Jim, because right now what you got going on is it pools water all the way up to the sidewalk when it rains.
Yeah, I mean, in the wintertime, it pools up, and it sits on the sidewalk, and it's freezing. You know, it freezes on the sidewalk, and that's a hazard.
Yeah.
Alderman Brown?
Yes.
We were out there several times this winter because this issue's been ongoing since then, and we've never witnessed that. The slopes that we shot indicate all positive drainage. This roadway was resurfaced 18 years ago. It's clear that the previous homeowner probably never did much to maintain their apron, and when Mr. Chatterster bought the property, I'm guessing the apron was in pretty poor condition when he bought the property. Sidewalk has no criteria to meet any hazards. Sidewalk actually had decent, really pretty good criteria.
Right, because we've already replaced it once. You know, because we had to put... We had to tear it out to put water and sewer and electric. And we replaced the sidewalk at our own cost just for the winter so people could walk on the sidewalk.
So it's just, it's pooling in the apron now, is what's going on?
It is not. It's actually positive drainage from the sidewalk over the edge of curb.
You're on there.
The edge of curb, but does it then drain down the curb? I mean, you can see in the pictures, there's water laying there. I'm not arguing with you, Gary, but I'm just trying to see what's going on.
That's where they overlaid back in 1999.
Yeah.
Created that lift there. So if the apron were to be redone and brought up to the edge of the pavement out over the edge of the sidewalk, there's positive drainage.
Did you look at the curb and how broke up it is and stuff? You know, like, when a person, you know, is replacing curb, they gotta replace asphalt and everything.
Jim, we're not gonna...
You know, because the city...
We're not gonna rebuild the street.
No, I understand that, but you have to break out the asphalt to replace the curb.
In today's construction, we do that. We're doing it this year.
Right.
In our reprogram. We're not tearing out curb and putting a new curb. We're grinding the existing asphalt down somewhat, and then we're overlaying the gutter of the curb. And we are ending up with, just like you say, you're ending up with, say, a two or a four inch back of the curb, not a six inch back. But the other option we have in doing that is basically a complete reconstruct. And we can either completely reconstruct one block in town, or we can grind and overlay and repla... You know, put a Band-Aid more or less on two miles for the same cost.
This road being resurfaced 18 years ago is on the horizon in the next four or five years to resurface again. At that point in time, we come in, just like we have been with the other streets, we come in and we do spot curb and gutter repairs. And where there are driveways like this, where there's a depressed curb or no more curb, we raise up and at least get the gutter there, which that wasn't done back in 1999.
I mean, you know, like, the city, you know, made us put storm sewer all the way around the prob... Or all the way around the property, but, you know, at our cost, you know, that's like $10,000 that we, you know, that we didn't have.
But that was done...
But you're saying that the city, you know, don't have the money to do anything in front.
That was done to address your private drainage issue.
What?
That was done to address your private drainage issue on your lot, which is one of the lower lots on the block. And when you were then reconstructing the house and the garage, we made you make drainage improvements so that the next buyer can move in and have adequate drainage in their property. We were that of all builders.
Well, I think that the city should occur, you know, a little... You know, you're gonna get a lot more tax dollars on the house. I mean, it was an eyesore, you know, on the property, and we tore the place down and build a brand-new home and stuff. And I asked the engineer department, you know, I said that we would do the work if the city paid for the material. I don't think that's a bad deal.
Well, again, the sidewalk is in fine condition. It did not need to be replaced. The apron was never apparently maintained by the homeowner by all appearances, and aprons are to be maintained by the private homeowners. Neither of which are the city's responsible.
I understand that, but we do have a water problem, and we are gonna put a new approach and a new driveway in there. But, you know, I don't wanna put a new driveway in there and have this water problem.
Well, if you're gonna put... It sounds to me like if he puts a new approach in, he can cure the problem.
Exactly.
I think the sidewalk's gotta be raised so we got enough pitch.
Here's what I'd like to do, Jim. You know, this is something that the council doesn't have the experience in really, you know. I'd like to throw this into our city administrator's lap, make it her responsibility to work with you and the engineering or public works is to come to a resolution. If it means we do nothing, it means we do nothing. If it means we work with you some way, that's what we do. But I'd like to ask Laura to get in contact with you and set up a meeting and take, you know, action on this. Take a look at it. All right. Is everybody on the council okay with that?
Yes. My guess is his concern is that he's gone down this path, and that's why he's come to us. So I just want you to understand what we're doing is we're directing staff to readdress this. So not just to... It may end up in the same place, but I don't want you to think that it's just try again.
All right.
But we're directing them.
Sometimes it's just, in my opinion, sometimes it's just a matter of miscommunication.
Yeah.
Because if he's gonna replace the approach, it sounds like it's gonna fix the problem.
Yeah.
Correct, but Mr. Chatterster had always stated that he'd like to replace the approach and have the city pay for the materials.
Hmm.
And that's where the city is objecting because we don't feel that we need to pay for the materials.
Yeah.
But what are we gonna do with the curb? You know, I mean, you know, I gotta, you know, make a driveway, you know. You know, the curb's all broke up and stuff. I'm not gonna, you know, go along and replace all the city curb, you know.
My recommendation, if you're going to do an apron, I don't know if you're doing it in concrete or asphalt, but if you're doing it in concrete, my recommendation would be to put a tool joint about two or three feet back, and then when we come back in four or five years from now, we'll saw cut along that joint and be able to match up your concrete. If you're doing asphalt, we'll just saw cut two or three feet back in the future.
Well, I'll work with you, Laura, and, you know, try to resolve this, you know, because, you know, like I said, you know, I wanna make a nice, you know, a nice-looking driveway and stuff, and, you know, I got a brand-new house and stuff, and I don't wanna, you know, put a tool joint, you know, like, you know, it's... That just don't look good. You know, I've done concrete, you know, all my life and stuff, and... So we can get together and get this resolved?
Absolutely.
All right.
All right, thanks, Jim.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, anything else from the public? Okay, we're gonna go on then to the consent agenda. We have a couple of items. Item A is ordinance 17-53, declaring surplus property. We got that memo from Scott Haynes. And item B is the May financial report. Anybody have any questions on either one of those? And get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by O'Brien, second by Elliott.
Jody.
Elliott.
Wow.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
Too soon.
Item number six, presentation on the wastewater treatment facility, monthly construction update. Alderman O'Brien.
This is, as you say, just a monthly update. We've all probably read it. It's pretty concise. It's about 15 percent done, the project. There's been some unforeseen conditions. There's been some change orders listed at the end of it. Seems to be going pretty well. I just spoke to Scott Elliott today, and seems to think that things are going okay. So...
Thank you, yes. Things are going good. We're a little behind. The contractor's going to... The contractors have software which kind of tracks their whole project, so he has a monthly kind of data dump into that software, if you will. So by our next weekly meeting or so, he'll be telling us roughly where we fall and the plan to get back on track. That was a little bit delay in the middle or in the beginning with the storm sewer on Flynn Street. I think we reported that in our last month report. I'll start this video. Basically, right now, this is looking southward from Flynn Street, so the vacant property you see here was where the admin and garage was, and here's the food pantry over here and our excess blow tank. But I'll get this started, and we're not gonna probably fly it the whole time, but it's like we did last time, I wanna at least give you an overview. So they have been working to... Since we last talked, they worked to excavate and demolish that whole building structure. Very soon, they'll be coming in to begin preparations for the aggregate piers. Those of you who watched the Walgreens go up, you saw them drill holes and then fill the holes with aggregate and rock, and that's what they used for piers. That's basically the exact same system that we'll be using for that building there. It's an economic system in these types of soil conditions. All right, so... And a lot of the other parts of the plant are still the same. We'll switch to the pictures here. Jerry's got some of the highlights and just in pictures. This is kinda nice, though, in that we do fly this drone, and it will give an ongoing and kind of comprehensive, you know, tracking as we go through the project, so... There's only four pictures, I think. In fact, maybe the same ones that we were just looking at, so... Couple of the highlights then. Storm sewer along Flynn Street, that was just recently completed. That's the major storm outfall for, like, the whole Main Street watershed, which comes through there. That was quite a project up in the hill into Parmarco. Every bucket full out of the backhoe, we came up with some new surprise. All sorts of historic steam pipes and, you know, old structures and cisterns and just what you would expect to find in an old industrial portion of town. Aggregate piers I already mentioned. And then at the south end of the sludge dewatering building, the current sludge dewatering building, which my perspective is here, that's the sludge dewatering building. Now we're looking north, and Clark Island is over here, and these are the three clarifiers at the south end of the site. So this sludge dewatering building now has provisions, this roof structure here, to allow for a temporary dumpster because we're gonna be excavating where we traditionally have been pulling in and out the trucks for our dumpsters. So when we dewater the sludge, some of you haven't had the opportunity to go through the plant, but when we dewater the product at the end, it basically turns into like a topsoil. I mean, for all intents and purposes, that's kind of the consistency of it. But it goes out in a dumpster and gets hauled to a landfill, and you need to keep that material dry because you've just spent efforts to dry out that material. So you put it under roof, goes into a dumpster, gets hauled out, and that'll be the condition then for a while until we get... It's basically an under-construction type condition for several months to do it that Alderman O'Brien mentioned, there's been a few unanticipated items, which in a project of this scope is not unusual. But I do wanna bring back to you probably next week a policy for allowing staff approvals to a certain level for change orders. Again, with a $20 million project, there's gonna be some change orders. We are already on CMR number 15 or 16?
23.
23. CMR number 23. The change order only brought us through like 15 or 16. So those are contract changes. Sometimes there are contract changes for deducts, sometimes there are contract changes for additions. They balance each other out. We're actually gonna be ready, and we'll be bringing to you also change order number one because we don't have a policy in place. And so we're gonna be looking for your authority that at the staff level, we're probably gonna look for like $100,000 worth of authority to approve at the staff level, and anything over that, trying to get approval at the Cow, community of the whole here, so we can keep things going. We're not... None of us are sitting here anticipating such large change orders, and we haven't had any such large change orders, but we just need to set the framework at this point in time. So CMR through number 15 or 16, I can't remember what it is, that's $68,000 of the net, once you get additions and subtractions in there. So that one will come to you. So we can have that discussion when we bring back the policy and what council would be comfortable with or not doing as well. So that'll come to you probably next week, at least the policy will. I'll open it for questions.
What are the hours of construction?
We're abiding by the city's hours, so 7:00 AM to in the evening, whenever... I think the city's official hours go to something like 9:00 o'clock at night or something kind of ridiculous in the evening, but we're not working out there that late.
They're not working out late?
No.
7:00 to 3:30?
7:00 AM, yeah. I mean...
It's about 7:00 to 3:30, give or take. There's some critical path items like the ram dag aggregate piers.
Come on up and use the mic, Mike.
Jerry Ruth, Trotter and Associates, good evening. There have been some critical path items like the ram dag aggregate piers that are gonna be starting next week that were delayed by all the storms that we had recently. Another project, specialty contractor was held up due to the rains, so that's something that has affected the schedule. I just wanted to note that, that's all.
So how do you, like, if there's specialty things they wanna get in and get out, so they might be working more than eight hours a day? Is that correct?
I would anticipate, yes.
Right.
According to the contractor, they can put in about 600 lineal feet downward of aggregate pier per day, so they're gonna be working off of that and potentially be in and out of there within two to three weeks for the main building and a structure that we have near the south end of the site.
So Jerry, now that you've been down there doing a little bit of digging and demo and everything, have you found, as Gary mentioned, anything real surprising that's down there that we didn't know we might encounter?
Uh, we found some things, yes. We found some unknown buried manholes. We found some unknown buried car parts. We found some unknown buried duct banks. A lot of duct banks going through there, two major ones. They were all empty, all decommissioned, but, you know, they had red concrete, so we've worked with city departments to identify them or know that they weren't identifiable and break into them very gently.
Does some of that have to change orders, too, for delays for the contractors, or...
There will be a CMR upcoming for the dig through there. We wanted to do that all at once. There was a lot of items going through the... Putting in that 42-inch storm sewer, so we wanted to bring it all into one, show it all to at once, as opposed to coming in with every eight-inch, four-inch, 10-inch pipe that we found through there.
But you're itemizing the different delays.
Yes.
Like, you're coming into a duct bank that's red concrete, you gotta approach it slowly to try to identify what it is, and even if it's empty, you have to realize it's empty, find out. So that's a delay of a couple of hours to a day almost, depending upon how information quickly it's gathered, so...
Very true.
That's an added cost.
It will be.
And so you'll have that itemized. I mean, not necessarily for the council, but for, at least for Gary, and he can relay that to us, correct?
Yes. The contractor's gonna be providing me with a complete breakdown of everything that he found. We're gonna be cross-checking it with the notes and the pictures that we took in the field and just confirming that, yes, it was in an unknown condition. If we ran into bedrock, we document how much time it took them to break it out and get it out of the way, things like that. But yes, it will be documented.
How much bedrock did you run into?
Uh, okay, so when we went up the hill on the west side of Flynn Street, for example, there was several manholes that we knew about that were dropped manholes. We'd come in high and come out low. Some of those were done because there was a large shelf of bedrock like you'd see at the side of a river going through the state. We were able to shift the location of our proposed manholes to do a similar thing, so we were able to reduce the amount of bedrock removal significantly. But there were still some shelves that we had to bust out, maybe about eight feet wide or so, but again, it'll all be documented. It was relatively minor there. We found some others on Shumway. We were doing the duct bank installation, there's some very shallow bedrock there, so we broke that out in order to install some conduits for the city electrical relocate.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Are there extra conduits and things going in?
Extra, you mean spare?
Spares.
Uh, there were as many spares as we were told to put in. We didn't add any on top of that was requested.
Okay, just make sure there are some spares because there's always something that gets forgotten, or you just think, hey, you know what? Be nice to have this and...
Always. In the plant, for sure, there's always gonna be at least one spare in all of our duct banks. Usually, we try to foresee future motor control centers, large electrical equipment blowers that we're gonna have to use in Phase Two, for example, that's being taken into account.
Thanks, Jerry.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any questions?
Jerry, since we're on camera here, just hold in case anybody's watching on TV, this is Phase One of a multi-phase project, and the value of this phase is?
Twenty...
Twenty-six.
Six million?
Twenty-six million dollars. So it's a very large project, but it's a very necessary project.
Yes.
I just, again, you know, David pointed it out maybe a month ago, you know, it's just a monthly update, but I do appreciate seeing Scott and Jerry here representing, you know, Trotter and Associates. I do appreciate your time and effort.
We got a very, very big and important project in our city.
Very important, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Jerry. Jerry, as long as we're on the sewage treatment plant right down there, what's the update on the, you know, with walking around here, looking at all the water running down the river and everything? It made me think of the sewer that was kind of in imminent danger of repair or failure north of Wilson Street Bridge along the river.
Thanks, Jerry. Sort of one behind the buildings up here.
Yeah. What's the status on that?
As far as I know, there's no issue with it. That one is one... All the sewer... All of the utility structures that were identified during the study as needing further armoring or further protection, that plant went forward with Engineering Resources Associates and their process of obtaining permits so that we can then go... That's still an active project.
Okay.
That's what you're asking about.
Yeah.
Yep, still an active project.
Okay. And I'm just curious...
But no, as far as the actual sewer itself, there's no, there's no issue right now.
Yeah, there's no issue, yeah. But I am just kind of curious, and you probably don't know this off the top of your head. Jerry might know, and only because he lives down at the sewage treatment plant now, but just north of the sewage treatment plant, just south of the old Esda garage, and behind the Esda garage, there's a couple sanitary manholes right along the river there. They are also a very large trunk line that must carry from the north to the south to the sewage treatment plant, right next to the river?
Yes. And there's a list, they come in, those are the ones that come in the lift station, aren't they right there? And then they actually, they're actually come in like too low, and then they get lift, they lift it up on-site in order to get dropped into the headworks.
There are a couple of electric vaults along that run also.
There are a couple of electric vaults over there as well.
There's the trees that are falling into the river and we just don't want the electric vaults to fall into the river. Something we probably should be discussing shortly.
We've had, we've had a little bit of conversation about it, but it seems like it's just getting to be shoved to the front burner more and more because, as the mayor's mentioned, when that island formed in front of Duck Island, that kind of rerouted the velocity of the water and it's eroding the west bank of the river now, and that's where the sewer and electric is at that we're talking about.
Yeah. The island resulted in kind of a, um, channelization of the flows and increased velocity.
Yeah. Anybody have anything else? Thanks, Jerry. Thanks, Scott.
Thank you, Laura.
Okay, we're going to move on then to project status. Laura?
Yes, in my weekly update that I sent to you, I said that it looked like it would be better to move the mid-year presentations to the August first meeting, if everybody is okay with that. This being, you know, the first year that we're going through this, we felt that a little additional time in the preparation would make it a better presentation for everybody. So thank you for your patience on that. That would allow us a little bit more time on the twenty-fifth. One of the things that we do have on the twenty-fifth agenda, Wendy Bidnerick is here tonight, and she would like to do a presentation for everybody about the wage study that is being done and how that is being structured and what the potential results of that may be in terms of the implications of that. But maybe that night, since we are not doing the mid-year presentation, you may want to do one of your trips about, and you had mentioned going to visit some of the additional streetscape locations.
I'm not going to be here.
Oh, you won't be here? Okay. Well, then we'll wait because you are our favorite docent.
Okay.
Just to let you know, BATV is going to record the upcoming plan commission meeting where the Campana project will be discussed, and that is currently scheduled for August second. Our plan commission meetings begin at seven o'clock, and we do expect there to be a large crowd for that since included in there is the, the public hearing on that project. If this room proves to be insufficient for the, the crowd that comes to give their opinion that night, we will continue the meeting to August sixteenth and have already reserved a larger space for that meeting. So we'll just see how things occur on August second. Also wanted to ask a couple of things about our agendas. Last night, we had a couple of appointments that were put on prior to the consent agenda, and I'm just wondering if everybody is okay with that. The reason why we put those appointments ahead of the consent agenda is just, it is, it means, you know, there's usually a big crowd who's here for the appointments and just so that those people can hear the appointments and then move on was the reason those were put up. But I don't want that to be any detriment to the flow of the meeting, so is everybody okay with appointments being at the head of the agenda or?
I mean, in my opinion, it seemed to work okay.
Yeah. Me too.
I think too, it's good to have, especially the guys that are on duty at the times, they get back their jobs.
Right, right.
Standing around here waiting.
That's definitely the thought there.
If you have to leave for a call during a meeting, it gets a little crazy.
Exactly. And then the other thing is to put presentations maybe a little bit further down in the agenda, and the reason being that we may have some things on the agenda, particularly from public works or from community development, where developers have had to bring professionals with them and they are paying for their time to be here. And so in order to respect that, to try to put those things as early as possible in the agenda and then to move presentations.
I absolutely agree with that.
Okay. Are there any other suggestions that people would have for improving the, the flow or organization of our agendas? If you think of anything, let me know, of course. I think that's all I have, unless somebody has questions about a specific project.
The only question I have is on the plan commission meeting. I think it's fair to say that we will be over capacity, I mean, just based on the first hearing.
Well, our room here holds, the capacity we checked earlier is two-hundred-and-sixty-seven, and that's the full room, of course, so we'd only be using half the room. So if we anticipate that we could accommodate up to one-hundred-and-thirty, and I think even that would be pretty tight. The first time that we were having that meeting here, I would estimate that we had about a hundred-and-twenty people here, and that seemed to be a crowd that we were able to accommodate okay for that evening. So if, if it exceeds that, and last night's meeting, I understand from those in attendance that there were maybe about four dozen people who.
Last night at the church?
Yeah, eighty, oh, no, I'm sorry, it was about eighty-five people.
Eighty-five.
I read a hundred and thirty.
The article today said it was over, a little over a hundred.
A little over a hundred, okay.
That's what the four people we ran into last night said, that there was over a hundred.
So I'm just wondering, I think what's going to end up happening is if, if we get to a situation where a hundred-and-fifty, two-hundred people show up, we're going to say, eh, sorry, come back in two weeks, and that seems bad. Is there any way we can just schedule something and just get it out there right now saying, hey, you know what, in anticipation of an increased crowd?
I can ask. I think that one of the reasons why it may be difficult to do that at this point is because of the notices that were sent out for the public hearing that gave the date, time and place. So I understand what your concerns are, and I certainly will look into it, but I think that that might be.
Yeah, that'll be a problem.
The issue.
The continuance, I think we could do something.
Right.
Or the continuance, we could just have it here again, you know, again, I don't want to hear, or I don't think the plan commission needs to hear the same thing three hundred times, so.
That's pretty standard, though. We've done plenty of continued here.
Right. And we just do it here. I don't think that we have to change venues.
Okay.
Because all that does is it's going to make the meeting extremely long because you're going to have people say that they want to speak and you have a finite amount of time.
Will, will we have a defined amount of time for them, that people can speak, and will they be held to it?
Yeah, very good question. We discussed this in our staff meeting today and our recommendation to plan commission because plan commission ordinarily likes to set an end time for their meeting, typically at about ten-thirty for these longer meetings. And so I, we anticipate recommending a three-minute limit on people's comments and that we will time that. And I think that's only fair because that way it gives the maximum number of people the opportunity to speak within that limited period of time. The other thing that we would like to do is have people sign in that they want to speak at the meeting, and that should help us in terms of our records of the meeting to, to adequately, you know, in our minute state, who was giving what statement.
With that, too, I think that provides some order as far as people coming up to speak as well.
Mm-hmm.
So if they sign in, they will go in order in which they were, they were signed in.
Right. And then no one will be given the opportunity to speak a second time until we've gone through everybody who signed up on the list that speaks, that wants to speak at least one time.
Maybe in order to give visibility to the speakers, maybe we do something where we project and keep on resetting the time on the screen, so.
Yeah, in the, in the meeting, it was suggested that some other city council chambers do have a running clock.
Google timer, online.
Yep.
Google timer on there.
It's free, it's online.
Okay.
You can set it anytime you need.
All right.
There was, when you were talking about changing the venue, the part that kind of did stick in my mind, it, the Open Meetings Act does talk about, excuse me, if a public body is aware that a controversial meeting or public interest is going to take, that it's reasonable to expect that a place is not going to fit, you should change it, and if you don't change it, it could be a refusal, or it could be a violation. So I guess just make sure with Kevin on that, to clarify that it's already been put out there in the ad, the changes, and that possibly the best thing to do would be then the continuance that if too many people show up.
Okay, I'll check.
But it would be best to hear from him on that.
Exactly.
I think if you changed the venue when the public notice has already gone out on it, that would be more of a problem than a continuance.
Right, and that's why it's kind of conflicting, saying, you know, name the place, but if you think that the space isn't big enough, you could be in violation either way. You change the thing, you don't change the thing, so.
I, I have to ask the question, why are we micromanaging a meeting that's not ours? This is just, just a question that came to me. It's like, not my meeting, I'm going to watch it online, and the plan commission has a chairman and all the people that can handle this, so if they want to let people talk for ten minutes, that's up to them.
I get micromanaged every day, so.
Well, I understand, but, you know, it's, this is not our meeting.
And that's why I was saying, these are just staff's recommendations to plan commission, it's their meeting.
Well, I, I'd like to see some, some standardization as far as how we deal with things, whether it's a plan commission or whether it's a council, so that there, there is no differentiation from meeting, meetings. We do have large meetings here with, that are controversial, we have a lot of people coming up to speak, and, and I, I'd just like to keep it the same.
Well, we also have times when there's nobody here and only one person comes up and speaks and speaks for fifteen minutes. So it's very hard to say, and this night, we're only going to limit it, and then this night, we're going to let people talk ad nauseam.
I don't think that's hard to say. I mean, it depends on, it depends on attendance. I mean, if there's ten people in the audience and they all want to talk fifteen minutes, I mean, I don't necessarily want to be here for three and a half hours hearing the same thing ten times over, but if it's a hundred people out here and they all have three minutes worth of stuff to say, it's the, you know, it's the same thing.
Just a point that Jenny just brought up to me, though, is that the plan commission on August second is starting at six o'clock, and that is because they have zoning board items that will be on their agenda. So if you were thinking that they should move it, then you'd have to notify all those people also, and, you know, the meetingsmen, I think, you know, announced that it's going to be here and it needs to be here, and it starts at six o'clock. And if they decide that they're only going to take public comment for an hour and a half, or whatever the plan commission decides, if they can't get everybody in that signs up, they'll have to continue it.
Okay.
Okay.